Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Would everyone please stand to say the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mathias, would you call the roll?
Okay, Pastor Moody.
Present.
Dr. Randalls.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Felb.
Present.
Dr. Flores, not here. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
John Mathias, yes. President Baker.
Here. Could you make sure that reflects that Dr. Flores had an excuse if it matters?
He was excused?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved?
Support.
Call the roll.
Okay, Pastor Moody.
The approval of the agenda.
Support.
Dr. Randalls.
Actually, all in favor. Any names? Okay, thanks. Okay, the first thing on our agenda is we have a couple celebrations. Would you like to introduce them?
President Baker, members of the board, I would like to ask Ron Gorman to come forward to share, actually, Ron is up for two celebrations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Baker, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, distinguished members of the Board of Education. Our first celebration this evening is for the Econ Club's writing contest. Each year, the Econ Club, in conjunction with Grand Valley State University, sponsors the Econ Club's annual essay contest. 2015 marked the 37th Econ Club annual essay contest. Students had to submit essays of 1,500 to 2,500 words. Essays were judged on originality, grasp of subject, effectiveness of focus and organization, spelling, grammar, punctuation, and correct sentence structure. This year's topic was paying it forward. Why and how does service and philanthropy impact the economic vitality of a city and a region? Essays were due February 4. Winners were announced at the end of March. Winning essay writers, their parents, and teacher representatives attended a luncheon at the Econ Club. The winners and up to 12 honorable mentions were announced at the luncheon on April 20, 2015. First place was an iPad and $2,000. Second place was an iPad and $1,000. Third place, an iPad and $500. And fourth place was $250 to each student. Two of the students from the Grand Rapids Public Schools were winners in this year's contest. Abigail Shoffel from City High School and Diego Galvan from Innovation Central High School, who is unable to be in attendance this evening due to a conflict with his work schedule. At this time, Mr. Michael Pascoe, principal of City High, is here with me this evening. He will introduce Abigail, and she will tell us a little bit about her essay. Mr. Pascoe.
Thanks, Mr. Gorman. Superintendent Neal, hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Board members and student reps, good evening. This is Abby Shoffel. She's a full diploma candidate. That's pretty much all I need to say, but here's some other things she does. Legislative debate team, she qualified for third at state and qualified for nationals, but can't go because she has a overlap in her BlackBerry. Forensics team, fourth at state. She's part of the Young Women for Change Group. She's Young Leaders Against Violence Vice President, president of the Youth Literary Association. She's on the Mayor's Youth Council. She's the chair of the Kids Speak Committee, works at the 61st District Court. She's an intern at City Hall, works at Papa John's, too, if you want to deal on pizza. Youth Grant Committee for the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, Diversity Club, Calling All Colors member. You're making me feel pretty bad right now, actually. Board of the Nationals Honor Society member. She's on my principal's advisory council, which seems to be the least important of all these on here. She's on the yearbook.
You need help there, Mike.
Somehow, somehow you had time to write an essay, and you're one of the winners.
Does she keep Mr. Atkins in line?
She does. Yeah, I think she does. And she's a great friend of Henry's, so anytime I got to get a hold of Abby or vice versa, I just email her. Call one of them down in the office. But anyways, you happened to take time to do this essay. You did phenomenal. Maybe tonight you could tell us a little bit about the impact and what philanthropy means to you and everything that's involved with this contest. Abby?
So what really sparked my interest with this essay was that it was all about philanthropy and how it impacts the economic vitality of a region. And I feel like when it comes to philanthropy, we normally focus on the individual benefits, but we don't really focus on how it benefits the entire region as a whole. Because really philanthropy is actually the third largest producer of our GDP in the entire region, only coming after industry and manufacturing. So essentially philanthropy is really important when it comes to economic vitality. And going to a school where we're funded partially by the WAGI Foundation and other philanthropic groups, it's just a really important part of how I get my, go out on a daily basis, of where I get my books from, it's where I get a lot of the money going to GRPS, is through philanthropic organizations. So I figured they needed to be recognized and talked about how they actually benefit the economic vitality as a whole. So, I think.
It's wonderful.
It's great.
You did a great job with Kids Speak, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, you guys. Appreciate it.
Dr. Baker and members of the board, Mr. Gorman will share with you now the second celebration.
So this year, we took a little different path to assigning the student reps for the Board of Education. And what we found through exploring that different path is that there are so many student leaders in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. And all of the students who are behind me in their white shirts and Javante and Henry on the board went through a rigorous application process and an interview to really represent their peers in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Ms. Sandy Harvey.
She's on the other end.
Who is a recent college graduate.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Ms. Harvey and I have been co-facilitating the meetings that take place once a month. Our topics have been about school uniforms, school discipline, academics, athletics, you name it, the students talked about it. And selfishly, it keeps me connected with students. So I appreciate all you've done for me to let me get into the schools and interact with some very, very talented people. So tonight, what we would like to do is recognize our Student Leadership Council. Our hope is that the individuals who follow you next year will provide as much focus as you have this year, will really be a driving force in what we do in this school district. But Ms. Harvey and I, we can't thank you enough for all you've done this year. So with that, please accept a small token of our gratitude. We had some T-shirts created for you, and we also have a little certificate of appreciation that we'd like to give you this evening. So at this time, I would like to read the students, the executive director's Leadership Council's names. So when I call your name, please step over here. Please stand so the board members can see you. First up, from City High School, a junior, Mr. Henry Atkins. Don't feel that you have to put your shirt on. Gentlemen wore their ties, so I appreciate that. Next up, from Ottawa Hills, Mr. Anthony Alexander. He's a junior at Ottawa Hills. From Grand Rapids Learning Center, Ms. Kiara Brooks. She's a senior. She'll be graduating. From Grand Rapids Montessori, she is the only freshman, and that is Rachel Edinger. Just came out of a soccer game, correct? Soccer match? Can you say that correctly? Soccer practice, I'm sorry. Next up is a senior who sits on the board, Mr. Javante Jefferson from Innovation Central High School. Next up from City High School is Ashley King. She's a sophomore. Senior from Union High School, Mr. Valentin Peña. And I believe lastly, Ms. Kendall Reed from Grand Rapids Learning Center. She's a senior and will be graduating as well. Lots of student leaders in this school district. They all have a voice. They all want to make it a better place. Mr. Helmhold was telling them all about the bond. So even though they may not see all of the great things that could potentially come from the bond, they want to make this school district and our schools a better place for those to come after them. So team, thank you so much. I appreciate it, and congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations. I understand you guys had a lot of complaints about the uniforms.
And if you do, just send an email to Teresa Nellis, nillt@.
Thank you very much.
So actually, I have, we have two more celebrations very quickly that are not on the agenda, but anyway, Superintendent Neal has won two awards in the last couple weeks. And so I wanted to just acknowledge that. The board would like to say, first is, she received the Outstanding Alumni Award from the Grand Valley State University, from the School of Public and Nonprofit Administration. They should rename it for you. And then secondly, she received the 2015 Women of Achievement and Courage Award from the Michigan Women's Foundation. So over 600 persons were at the Marriott a couple weeks ago, and some of us got to see this, and it was pretty impressive accomplishment. So I just wanted to say thank you. All right, moving on, public comment. For board agenda items only, do we have any?
Or report of student representatives?
First, we'll do the report of student representatives.
So what I wanted to discuss tonight wasn't really a report to the board, but just a report to everybody sitting in the audience here today. Tomorrow, we're going to be voting on the referendum to increase the sales tax to 7%. And we talk a lot about how this is going to go toward our infrastructure, repairing our roads, but a substantial amount of it is also going to go toward funding our schools. And right now, it looks like turnout is going to be low, and it would be a shame for a minority of our city to decide something that's going to affect all of us. So I'd appreciate it if everybody took the time tomorrow to go out and vote on this very important referendum. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say congratulations to Superintendent Neal. Although 600 people in attendance was one of them. So I was there to see you get your award, and I appreciated it. We actually had a conversation, and just knowing her on this board, I got the chance to know her even more personally, and with a group of friends, and they didn't know how she was exactly. And I tell them all the time that she's a great person.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You can hook them up. Now we can move on to a public comment for board agenda items. So we do not have any public comment for board agenda items. Secretary's report.
All right, well, community bond meetings, please be reminded that the public is encouraged to attend one of the community bond meetings. There are four meetings remaining. Meetings take place from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the following locations. So May 5, tomorrow, at City High Middle School. And then Wednesday, May 6, at Gerald R. Ford Academy Center and Gymnasium. May 12, Union High School Auditorium. Thursday, May 14, at Innovation Central Cafeteria. The district would like to hear from you, so please come out and ask questions. We're also reminded that there is a Cinco de Mayo celebration. I know that as a board, we're going to be celebrating at the public museum, but just remembering those as well.
That's it.
Reverend Mathias, did you mention the time of the bond meetings?
The times were not on my report. Oh, perdón, I did say that.
Okay, sorry.
Six to seven thirty.
Six to seven thirty, I'm sorry.
So this is people's chance to say what we should spend money on if it could be a democracy. All right, Superintendent's report.
I would ask Mr. Ron Gorman to come up once again. And Dr. Baker and members of the board, Ron will present two issues.
Okay, so we are getting into a very fun time of year in our school district. We have two significant events that are going to happen relatively quickly. The first event that is going to take place is Thursday, May 21. It's our Senior Fun Day. We'll get started around 9:00 a.m. So this is our fourth annual Senior Fun Day. And this is something that, when Superintendent Neal came on board, she said, you know what? We need to do something fun for our seniors, those of whom who are going to walk across the stage on time. So at the current time, we have approximately 600 students who are going to participate in this event. We're really, really excited about it. Year one, the Creston Polar Bears won. I was the principal at that time when we won year one. Year two, Creston High won under leadership of Troy Wilbon. And year three, Innovation Central won under the leadership of Mr. Mark Frost. Last year, City came in with some fantastic T-shirts, and they may be the front runner this year. I don't know for sure. Ottawa Hills always represents, and then some of our smaller programs as well. But we're really, really excited about it. We couldn't do it without the help of Natasha Neal, Mel Atkins, Emmanuel Armstrong, Loretta English, Dana Beelk, and Maya Frazier will be leading that process as well this year. So we're really, really excited about it. If you go to Superintendent Neal's office, there's a plaque of who the superintendent was or is for the Senior Fun Day, as well as the principal's name is also on that plaque. So my name is on that plaque in Superintendent Neal's office at the very top, just in case you wanted to know. It is prominently displayed, yes, Ms. Slade. And also, a very, very large trophy is awarded to the winning team. So Hausman Field, hope for a beautiful day. If you would like to get into the dunk tank, I know that's in demand, but Mr. Ross, if you would like, we can make sure you get in there. Right? Or Reverend Mathias, please let us know. We'll get you on the list.
Mr. Legrand.
Mr. Legrand?
Pretty good, don't do it.
So we're really, really excited about that event and hope that all of you can join us. Next up, it's the date or dates that all of us have been looking forward to all year. It's the 2015 graduation ceremonies. My assistant, Sandy Harvey, is passing out the dates and times so the general public is aware. City High will graduate on Thursday, June 4, at Fountain Street Church, from 6:00 until 7:00, with a reception following the ceremony. Our students with disabilities, they will graduate on Friday, June 5, from Sunshine Church, from 5:00 until 6:00. Adult education, this year, we'll have a larger graduation ceremony. Graduating with adult ed are students from the Grand Rapids Learning Center. And if you remember, just a few years ago, we had two or three graduates at the Grand Rapids Learning Center, and I've just heard from their staff that they could potentially have 30 to 35 graduates in the Grand Rapids Learning Center, which is our program on Grand Rapids Community College's campus. So they have about 90 students right now, 35 of whom will graduate this. That'll be a much bigger ceremony. And then Saturday, the marathon session, the day we all look forward to. Superintendent Neal told me I didn't have to attend all sessions. Oh, she told me I had to attend every single one. That's right, that's right. I got that mixed up.
That's right.
Ottawa Hills will start us off at 11:00. Followed, no, I would never get out of it, it's a great day. Followed by Union High School at 2:00. Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori at 4:30. And then we will close the evening with Grand Rapids U-Prep. So it should be three fun days. We're really, really excited about it, and we are hopeful that we will have one of the largest graduating classes in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. So we hope to see all of you there. And if there aren't any further questions, I'll move on, because I think I've been up here four times, Superintendent Neal, and I don't want to get the longest celebration from Mr. Helmhold.
That's right.
Superintendent's report. Any questions or concerns?
I'll sit.
Have one, please. Thank you.
Right, moving on to the action items. The first item is the Best Practices Resolution, and.
Move for approval?
Move for approval first, yes. Can I get a? Okay. Can you explain what the resolution is that the state?
So there's a list of issues that if we meet for the best practice, then we can get additional dollars. And I don't have the list in front of me, but I'm Larry. I'm an ex-Larry Old to come forward to go over those. We met, I think, five of the seven, or seven of the nine, for the additional per pupil allocation.
Yes, good evening, President Baker and Superintendent Neal. Best practices, since the current administration's been in office, they've added a kicker most years called best practices that are developed by the state legislature. And if you achieve a certain number of these best practices, there's some additional dollars that really are, we budget for actually receiving those dollars. So this year, there were nine best practices. We're required to achieve seven of those nine by June 1. And if we do, we will get $50 a student added to our state aid, which amounts about $800,000 for GRPS. So included in your packet were those nine items. We actually have achieved eight of them, or will achieve eight of them by June 1. And so the resolution that's before you is wording from the state, needs to be approved. We then file that with the state, and we'll get our dollars as soon as they get that resolution.
And we've been, and these are best practices that we've been implementing already.
Yeah, actually, actually, this year, or last year, too, being my first year here, yeah, we have actually had these in place prior to them being a best practices. So we are on the forefront, if you will, of best practices. It's interesting, I was at an MSBO meeting last, statewide meeting last week, and there are a number of districts that this really is new stuff to them, but not for us, so it's been good. It may go away next year. One of the current proposals out there by, I think the House would roll it into the foundation allowance, it may not, but for this year, we have achieved it. It is budget, the budget you approved last year includes us receiving this, so it's dollars that we need to operate the district with, yes.
So we are voting on?
The resolution.
On a resolution that we will abide by seven of these nine.
That we have achieved.
That we have achieved.
Achieved actually eight of the nine, so they're actually listed in there.
We're voting, vouching for the fact that we've achieved this.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
So we had a motion in the second? We want to call for the verbal?
Yeah, can we get any further discussion of this? Okay, thanks. Call the roll.
We're doing a verbal, correct? All in favor, or do we need to?
No, you have to do each person.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores is absent. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. President Baker.
Yes.
Okay, the second, is the KISD. 2015, can we get a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ISD budget as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Let's just go ahead and vote.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores is absent. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. President Baker.
Yes.
Okay. The next is the consent agenda grouping. Can I get a motion to support?
So moved?
Support.
Call the roll.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores absent. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. President Baker.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion item for the Kent ISD School Board election. And.
Right in front of me.
Yeah.
Someone else have it right there? Here it is.
Page?
Resolution designating district selection representative.
Genitive?
Is that it? Yeah. To be adopted to honor after May 11. Quickly went through this. You just need a motion to approve?
Well, it's not May 11, but we're just discussing.
This is not part of my Kent Intermediate Association of School Boards, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so you're not covering for me well there, Mo.
I know. I'm trying.
What page is this on?
What goes laterally? Okay, the underside. 140. Excuse me while I get a lesson on this. So our illustrious wisdom behind us has just informed me that this is not voting on the resolution.
We're not voting, yes.
Right. It's discussing who might go to vote.
Okay.
Okay?
That was, that would be the document that we're looking for, so.
So we can just discuss who would.
But we should decide.
We should discuss who should come from this body to vote. I think Mo should come from this body to vote. That's my discussion. I should go to vote?
You're.
Are you making a motion?
Can we get a second on that motion? I'll second that motion.
Any motion?
I mean that motion. And a motion. For you. This is representative government? Is this the way this works?
This is an action. I think Ms. Slade would represent this body well to take a vote on this issue with the school board, with the intermediate school board.
So this is electing board members to the Kent ISD School Board. And which is not done by knocking on doors, but by getting one of us to go and support someone.
Someone to go.
Is there a date on there, so that way you know that you can do it?
I don't know. I have it in front of me.
Do you see it, Monica?
Monica, Dr. Randalls here.
Has to be passed prior to, between May 11 and May 29.
June 1.
The meeting is June 1 at 6:00 p.m., the Rogue Room, Kent ISD.
So between May 11 and May 29, we had the vote for who we will send to the June 1 meeting to vote on our behalf for school board.
It's officially page 169 of 170.
So that means that we'll need to have this as an agenda item.
She is at a board meeting unless she can sprint.
That's correct.
None of us can be there. 6:00 p.m.
We are at a very significant.
Oh, wow. That's the discussion. No one will be there. Be there?
Nobody, because you will be indisposed.
Can we do a proxy call? Might be. Check and check to see.
We ask.
I'll check to see if you can do a proxy.
See about that. Then we would actually vote on this person to represent us after May 11, so it'd have to be our. May 11th, so it'd have to be at our next board meeting, so.
Yep.
Okay.
I think Ally will represent us well if we need someone.
Calendar old.
Yeah, did it say that we had to vote for one of us? Designating a representative and the candidates that the board supports.
You're willing to go?
Yeah, I bet you would.
I think you have to elect.
It's a way that we can move you to our next meeting.
Yes, we're going to have to move it to our, well, so we will have it as an action item.
Okay.
And we'll evidently discuss it at that time, how we do it, but we will find out if we can have a proxy vote, or what is our responsibility in terms of doing this.
And I'll get that information.
All right, thank you very much. Mo? All right, public comment for any items, agenda or non-agenda items.
We do have Ruth Ann Lamas.
Lomas.
Lomas. Sophie would like to come up?
I don't know if I can follow all these educated people. I was going to make a proposition, but I'll change that to proposal. Sounds better, doesn't it?
Okay.
I represent Grand Rapids Sister Cities International. For those of you who do not know, we are a sister city to five cities. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear very well, thank you.
And the microphone is right in front of you if you want to realize that.
I'm hidden by this thingy here.
That's right.
Whatever you call that, because I'm not technologically...
Apparently, we aren't either.
Thank you, Maureen.
Ruth Ann and I go a long way back.
A long way back. We're both in special ed. Our sister cities are Omichima in Japan, Bielska Biawa, Poland, Perusia, Italy, the GA District of Ghana, and Zapopan, Mexico. I have a long story to tell, but, and it's quite interesting, however, I won't go into it. Our sister cities is proposing, one of my ideas, teaching at Kent City High School, and being a junior myself at Catholic Central High School in 1955, which kind of dates me, I entered a contest, and the contest was regarding the United Nations, celebrating the 10th anniversary. It was formed in 1945, and this was 1955. And I thought, it was a civics class, and the nun kind of persuaded us to try, so I thought, well, I'll give it a try. So I studied all about the UN, and I wrote as if I were the Secretary General calling the whole assembly to order. And sometime later, I was informed that I had won. But would I mind giving up my prize? Because Eric, my fellow student, was going to be a breadwinner, married, head of a family, and I was destined to be married, a housewife, and a mother. And in those days, we did not dare to say no to a nun. So I gave up my prize, but it never left me, ever. And I ended up being the breadwinner of my family, putting three children through Union High School, advanced degrees. One is a MSW, Master of Social Work, one is a PhD in Psychology, and the youngest one is an occupational therapist. In the meantime, I graduated from Grand Rapids Junior College and was married that very same year. After 14 years and a divorce, my mother encouraged me to go back to school, to Ten Grand Valley, at the classes that they were having in Godwin High School. So I did. And I received a psychology class, and I thought, golly, that's not too bad, I think I'll keep on going. So I did, and had a bachelor's degree from Grand Valley, and then I became a special education teacher at Kent City High School. During that time, I would get literature from different organizations, and one of them was from a fledgling group out in California who was starting a group and celebrating women in history. And it was National Women's History Week. So I got all the information I could about that group, and it just brought back that memory from high school, and I said, we're going to celebrate that in Kent City High School, which I did. And we started just with books in the school library about famous women, and then I came up with the idea of having an essay contest, 1,000 words, and the title was "A Special Woman in My Life: How So-and-so, Living or Deceased, Influenced Me." Well, unbeknownst to me, several people, students, entered, and one young man wrote this essay. And I'm only going to read you his opening paragraph. "A special woman in my life, how my mother influenced me. The chill of the Carpathian Mountains, the sanctity and silence of her aunt's convents, the poignant smell of borscht on a wooden stove, two-mile voyages on foot to school. Mornings so cold she had to scrape frost off the window to see outside. Seventeenth-century castles, April snowstorms, personal victories under the oppression sky of communism. My mother carried these memories when she moved to the United States." Written by a young man. So he won a $500 prize, and I invited Marge Byington, who was the chair of the Kent County Commission, to award that prize to him in front of an all-school assembly. Later, I became president of the Polish Heritage Society. So I took my idea to that society, and they accepted it and gave a $500 prize. But the only thing with that is that that person had to write about somebody of Polish heritage, and it had to be a female, because we were going to make the award on March 8th, which is International Women's Day. So that was a very big success. After three terms of serving as president of the Polish Heritage Society, I joined the Bielska Biawa Committee of our sister city in Poland, and I am presenting this same essay to the Grand Rapids Public Schools, Catholic Schools, Christian Schools, homeschoolers, and charter schools, grades nine through 12, and each sister city will donate $100 to this prize. Poland and Italy have agreed, Japan is agreed, but I'm having a little bit of trouble with the Ghana District, which is in, it's called the GA District, but it's in Guyana, and Zapopan, Mexico, which is our newest sister city. However, we have a representative now at the Hispanic Center named Roberto Flores, and he will be willing to work with us. So this is my goal to start, and I'm hoping that the schools, the secondary schools, will take part in the contest, but the definite rules are that it's 1,000 words, double-spaced, it must be, you must use this particular title. It has to be written about a female or a woman, living or deceased, for example, if I were to write about Madame Curie, and it has to have that person's heritage interwoven throughout the whole essay. Period. Any questions?
No, thank you. We will make sure that Superintendent Neal took this down and get the information and see that it gets shared with the schools, so.
So I would...
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I sit on, I sit on the Sister City GA District Committee, so I'll connect with you.
Please pass the basket?
We won't pass it, we'll just make sure you get it.
We're only asking for $100 to start with from each one, and then if it's a success, we would like to, like she did, she won the first prize, but we would like to have for a second, maybe third, because we want to call attention to our relationship with sister cities, and I want to include every nationality that's in our sister cities. So I appreciate your time, I hope I didn't take too much of it, but then again, I'm so used to the spotlight that, I'm relishing it.
Yeah, Mo's like that too, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a thank you written.
Love it, I'm with you.
All right.
Is there a, somewhere we're working, where I can find it?
There is, it's, oops. I wonder what it would be, that one, that's the original.
Mr. Gorman, can you come and provide assistance, please?
Yeah, if you can get her hand. And next we'll have the superintendent comments.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Dr. Baker and members of the board, I would like to thank the students who participated in Mr. Gorman's leadership group. They really did take a lot of issues on this year that has been shared with me, and we don't take, I don't take that lightly, and so I really appreciate the young people giving me their opinion, because they really do want to make the best district for other children, and they've given a lot of thought to what they have brought forth to me. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Board member comments, I think we'll start with Mr. LaGrande and work this way.
No comments.
All right, Pastor Moody?
I do believe in our consent agenda was a school nurse celebration on this one, and I've been on my pediatrician bandwagon, getting ready done all day, so I just want to say thank you very much to all the school nurses, it's a very challenging job.
Trying to decide if they really need to go home, or if they just forgot their homework, great.
They do a lot more than that. They're super busy.
They do a lot for us. Yes, I want to offer congratulations to Sandy Harvey for graduating from Cornerstone, and to Pastor Moody.
Pastor Moody, see, his master's degree is also.
All right, oh, wow. Thank you.
Very proud.
This weekend, I had the opportunity to help clean up the west side. About 300 people showed up, many of them were our own, some of our teachers, administrators, and some of our families that went up and down about 40 different blocks, and we cleaned the west side and had a great meal afterwards. It was really a fun time of unity and celebrating the west side, so it was very exciting.
I just want to thank Mr. Gorman and these two gentlemen, and the young leaders that were in front of us for their work that they did. Great, appreciated, and I also enjoyed kids speak quite a bit, that was, it's always great to hear, I've always learned every year from that. I also want to echo Mr. Atkins' comments about getting out to vote tomorrow for Proposal One. I think a lot of people are under the idea, it's a regressive tax, but they have to remember that the earned income tax credit is coming back to our working and poor families, and that it is guaranteed money for the schools, and it's guaranteed that they can no longer remove money from the school aid fund for the universities. So our roads will be fixed, our schools will be empowered, and the earned income tax credit will come back to our working families. So come out and vote yes for Proposal One tomorrow.
Thank you, Gorman, and congratulate Superintendent Neal again, and it's nice to hear, to find out about your degree, and setting good example about the graduating around here, so anyway, with that, we're adjourned.